Good evening. My name is Matt Barrett. I'm here tonight on behalf of Birdhouse Outdoor. I have Kristi Atcroft here. She's a member, partial owner of Birdhouse, and I'd like her to join in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths that help you God?
I do.
Name and address, please.
Kristi Atcroft, 801 Electric Street, Scranton.
Could you spell it for us?
A-D-C-R-O-F-T.
Mrs. Atcroft, you indicated you live at Electric Street. Who lives at that residence with you?
My husband and my three little children.
So your Scranton residence and your business is located here in Scranton?
That's right.
With regards to the particular application, does Birdhouse have a lease with the property owner, Barry Menora, in order to place a wall sign on the side of his property?
We do.
And you've made the application for a wall sign, and the dimensions would be...what would the dimensions be of the sign?
It's fifteen by twenty. It's a three-hundred-square-foot sign.
And Birdhouse has been here before, and I know other advertisers have been here before, on wall signs. Would it be the typical wall signs that the board has seen in the past?
That's correct. It's unlit.
Does the board need anything with regards to pictures? I know they are part of the application. So this would be on West Market Street. With regards to the application, we are seeking a variance. I know the board, just in September, I think, had approved a wall sign just at the corner of North Main and East and West Market there, at Providence Corners. I know that the board also approved one back in June, I believe, June or July, over at the top of Lackawanna and North Main. I think those were for the applicant Barletta. So I think the board is familiar with the wall signs. We are seeking a variance. It is located in the CN District, and that's the reason why we're here tonight requesting the variance.
So one of the areas that it's not permitted in is on Easter...it's not face or but, east or west Market Street, and that's in seven twelve F, one...or number two, I should say.
Yes, under seven twelve F. It's permitted in a CN, but under certain conditions.
Right.
And since those conditions can't be satisfied, that's why we're seeking the variance, similar to the one that would have been granted just down the street.
Right.
Just several months ago.
How big's the sign?
Three hundred square feet.
What does that say?
Three hundred square feet.
How about height and width?
Ten by thirty.
Oh, it's twenty feet high, fifteen feet wide.
Is it illuminated?
No, it's not.
Is there anybody who wants to give testimony in this case? You raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths that help you God?
I do.
Name and address, please.
Joffrey McGregor with Lamar Advertising, seven hundred James Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania.
Thank you. I'm just sorry to interrupt. I would have to object to Lamar offering testimony here tonight. I don't think that they would have the standing under the ordinance of business we need to establish that they would have to be subjected to substantial harm, substantive harm, with regards to the application itself. Lamar Advertising, I understand, is out of that range. I think today, they should be closing the market. They have a market share of eight point seven billion dollars.
We've let other sign companies speak in the past on multiple cases, so we'll let him proceed.
With the issue, with the understanding that I'll be asking about what substantial harm Lamar will suffer.
Sure, sure.
Oh, okay.
And before proceeding, I would just say that I am not here to either ask you to vote for them or against them. I'm just here to offer a little bit of perspective, if I may.
On that issue, he's not offering any testimony for or against it. I think the board has the capacity to make decisions without the assistance of Lamar Advertising.
You may proceed.
Thank you. Seems as though these wall-mounted signs are cropping up all over the city, and nearly all of these sign locations have come about either due to some creative interpretation of city regulations, or sometimes, as in this evening, a variance request. As you may know, this type of wall-mounted advertising signage is very common in larger urban areas, such as New York City and Chicago. And the reason is simple. It's in areas where there's densely packed layout of buildings in a large urban environment typically precludes open space for the placement of a traditional steel monopole sign structure. Having stated that, downtown Scranton and surrounding CN neighborhood commercial zones really can't be considered New York, Chicago, or LA. It's noteworthy that with the adoption of the current ordinance in nineteen ninety-three, the stated goal of the current city ordinance was to provide for both a careful balance between an aesthetically pleasing visual environment and to provide off-premise sign companies with reasonable opportunities for carefully regulated growth. However, the recent surge in the number of large-format vinyl wallscapes in the city, they keep appearing. It seems to be a trend that we find troubling for this reason. Given the current regulations, there exists within the city a finite locational potential for steel-mounted, structured, mounted advertising signs. By contrast, there are virtually limitless areas of exposed building wall space on which a wallscape can be displayed. And given this reality, the fact that many of these vinyl wallscapes may not be qualified as a permitted-by-right use under city sign ordinance, it becomes necessary for would-be operators to seek variances in order to obtain the building permits to maintain and operate these signs. Taking that forward, given the sheer number of blank building wall spaces that exist in the city, we think it's incumbent upon the city to take special care to ensure that any variance approvals for this particular type of signage meet the standards as codified in Act two forty-seven of the PA Municipalities Planning Code. We further note that the cost to develop and install an off-premise vinyl wallscape sign is typically thousands of dollars less than the cost of erecting a steel monopole sign structure. As a result, the wallscape sites present an attractive financial opportunity for these operators, despite the fact that a variance or a special approval may be necessary. Finally, as per section seven twelve F, subsections one and two of the ordinance, as Mr. Barrett mentioned, off-premise signs may be permitted in a CN neighborhood commercial zone, but only if, and I quote, "the sign does not abut and does not face east or west Market Street." As one who was a party to the adoption of the present sign ordinance, I can tell you that the intent of that provision was to make certain that smaller neighborhood commercial zones would not be inundated with large obtrusive advertising signage. The historic Providence Corners area, North Scranton, is one of the oldest commercial sections in the city, and in the last year or two, at least two large wall-mounted advertising signs have been approved or installed within about a block of where the proposed sign would go. I'll close with this. A chaotic overabundance of signs is not in the best interest of the city or of our industry, and I would submit to you that the ordinance language was and is written to prevent just that. And with that, that's all I have.
Thank you. May I ask you a question? Yes. Mr. McGregor, are you here...well, first of all, were you at...did Lamar take a position with regards to Barletta's application of three nineteen, three twenty-one North Main Avenue?
We did not.
Did Lamar take a position with regards to the application of Barletta for that location at, I think it's, was eighteen forty-four North Main Avenue?
We did not.
With regards to the standing of, in section one twelve B of the zoning ordinances, we can agree that you're here tonight with regards to your association with Lamar Advertising, correct?
I don't have that language in front of me. I do work for Lamar, as I testified.
That's right. I'm sorry. You're here for Lamar, correct?
I'm here on behalf of Lamar.
All right. And we can agree that Lamar is out of Louisiana, correct?
Corporate offices. Our local office is here in Scranton.
All right. You have about thirty-six hundred employees, correct?
I don't know that off the top of my head. If you're reading from the website, and it's published, it must be true, because we're a publicly held company.
Well, I'll tell you that the website also indicates that Lamar had a good first quarter, because they have fifty-one point three million dollars in net revenue in the first quarter. Do you have any reason to dispute that?
I have no reason to dispute that.
Okay. Are you here tonight to identify a substantial harm that Lamar's going to sustain with regards to this sign?
No, I'm not.
I have no further questions for Mr. McGregor. With regards to the standing of Lamar, I just renew my objection. The ordinance makes...the zoning ordinance makes clear that any business seeking to oppose it under one twelve B would be required to show that they would sustain a substantial harm. Lamar hasn't indicated any signage in the area. Lamar hasn't indicated any substantial harm. Even if they could, I don't know how a sign on West Market Street could affect a company worth eight point seven billion dollars. The Atcrofts have sought the application here tonight. They're city residents. Lamar apparently has not taken a similar position with regards to other signs, and as Mr. McGregor indicated, in very close proximity to this one. So with regards to the board's past practices and approval of signs, particularly one just approximately half a block away, I submit that the Atcroft and Birdhouse application should be approved, and I thank you for your time.
Mr. Barrett, for the benefit of ladies and gentlemen who are here...
Could I ask...can we get a ruling?
Can I finish my...
Can we get a ruling on...
Can you move the microphone over?
Yeah. Can we get a ruling on standing first?
Well, could I speak to standing, possibly, before we get a ruling on it?
First of all, can you introduce yourself, so we know who you are?
Yeah. I thought I had done that. My name is Sean McDonough. I'm counsel for Lamar Advertising. And with Mr. Barrett's indulgence, I would ask to speak to the standing issue. First of all, is the...as this board is well aware, consistent with the provisions of section four, four five dash twelve, the parties to a hearing in section B are defined as any person, which would include a corporate entity affected by the application, who has made timely appearance of record before the board, representatives of any legitimate civic or community organization, and any other person permitted to appear before the board. I would submit to the board that financial detriment to an entity has been recognized under Pennsylvania zoning jurisprudence as being an appropriate basis to stand on behalf of their organization to oppose an application. Mr. McGregor has indicated that Lamar is here partly because through the years, they have acted as a steward and have assisted the City Planning Commission. I think Donnie King can attest to that, with regard to the development, the orderly development of signage in the city of Scranton. Mr. McGregor speaks to that. With regard to another basis for standing, Lamar has a...I don't know if it's a monopole, but certainly a sign as you cross over the East Market Street Bridge in the area of J.J. McNally's. Most of us are familiar with that location. So I think that generally, with regard to their position in the city as an outdoor advertiser, and the competition that these vinyl wallscapes present, that Lamar certainly has adequate standing to offer a position in this case. Secondly, with regard to the lack of Mr. McGregor identifying those rationales for standing, which I have just articulated, I would suggest to Mr. Barrett, when you talk about a lack of information in the record, this is a variance, and there is not a single bit of evidence that has been identified that would support the granting of a variance under any of the criteria that exist either under the municipality planning code or the Scranton zoning ordinance. Thank you.
I stand by the reference to the particular section seven twelve. I think it's B. And it sounds like Lamar's position with regards to signage in the city of Scranton is down by the east...down by the river, pole sign, good, wall sign's bad. That's them being a steward.
The sign is down the river. It's been there since before I joined the company, which is thirty-two years ago. Not as far as...
Mr. King, could you, as far as signs being on Market Street, what is your opinion on as far as it's written in the code?
I'll read what the ordinance says. "The sign does not abut and does not face east or west Market Street, north or south Kaiser Avenue, or the North Great Expressway, south of the intersection with Main Avenue." The ordinance speaks for itself. It was written quite specifically.
I would certainly, with regards to that section, I would argue this sign does not face West Market Street. And the words are "abut" and "face" West Market Street.
Who's supposed to read it?
It faces North Main Avenue.
It does abut it, though.
Abut and face.
Well, let's go a little farther. As far as the variance, I'm looking at the requirements, and I don't see him meeting any of them for that sign. Maybe, Mr. Barrett, you can explain. I'm looking at one eleven E, section three, for the five requirements for a variance when it comes to that you say you're signing here. There's no physical circumstances. The property is not...it could be...the property is being used, so it doesn't fall on that one. There's hardship. What hardship would it be?
With regards to that issue, that's a good question. You know, I've heard it said that the zoning ordinances of the city of Scranton are quite outdated. And as you know, that zoning ordinances must be interpreted as broadly in favor of the property owner. So to the extent that there's been an advancement in wall signage, and to the extent that there's been some advances in the outdoor advertisement world that allows easy application of wall signage, I would suggest that the zoning ordinance is seemingly suggesting that you can only have a variance for a wall sign, in which case you'd have to show no other practical use for a building. I would say that that's not an up-to-date ordinance and puts the property owner in a great disadvantage with regards to the wall sign industry.
But if we look at this book as being outdated and obsolete, then we might as not have this book in front of us every night until city council takes it upon themselves to change this book, which hopefully happens soon. This is what we have to go by, is what's in front of us. And I agree. I understand what you're saying.
And you must interpret it, no matter how outdated it may be, as broadly for the property owner.
Well, the property is being used. There's a tenant or the owner uses that property, so the property's not affected by this. Whether the sign's there or not, how is the property affected by it?
It's the interpreting the use in favor of the property owner. So if the ordinance is insufficient in addressing that, and if, I guess, I mean, a wall sign, okay, now, obviously, they are being approved. They are approved on North Main Avenue in the last six months. Two of them have been. So obviously, there must be some application in the city of Scranton that recognizes that with regards to wall signs, you don't necessarily have to show that the property can't be used for any other practical purpose.
I'm not saying it does have to be shown that. I'm just saying, from my interpretation, what I'm looking at, it does meet any of them. I'm just saying that there's no hardship. What would the hardship be if this was denied?
I would ask the same thing. What is the hardship with regards to those that were approved? And...
Well, I can honestly sit here and tell you, I didn't vote for any of them. So, I mean, I follow on the rest of the board, but I did vote no on them, because my contention is that they didn't meet them five requirements. And it's not that I have anything against billboards or anything. My vote is I'm looking at what our ordinance is on this, as well with the other two that were approved, and, you know, where you said they were.
Yeah. I mean, there's been discussion here about competition. And if you're in the wall sign business, and you get approved, and then you come for a wall sign, and you come in May, and you're denied, and now you come again in December, and you're denied, it does beg the question about competition. And the ordinance itself specifically talks about the standing of people trying to inhibit competition.
Is there anyone else that wants to give testimony in this case? Okay, there's none.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Before we vote, I want to thank you for listening to me, obviously. I was heard somewhere.
Do we have a second?
Yes.
Sean?
Ms. Newcomb?
Well, I have to say yes, based on the testimony, Mr. Barrett's speech about how we have approved other signs.
Mr. Marx?
No.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Gattens?
No.
Mr. Chairman?
No. You voted three to two. You've been denied. Please call the next case.
Number five, Northeast Economic Advisors Inc. seeks variance to use or convert the building in phases as tenants are acquired and convert the building into a mix of office, professional, and medical slash dental use, and retail neighborhood shops and stores and uses, and residential high-end apartments at seven oh one Ray Street. And that would include reduction in parking requirements.
Before we get started, I'd like to say something. I'm going to recuse myself from this vote. The listing agent for this property is a coworker of mine, and I don't think that that's a huge conflict, but given the current climate of politics in our area, both of us are employed by the current mayor until January sixth at his firm. So I think it's fair for everyone, for me, to not vote on this.
Thank you. Good evening, members. My name is Attorney Raymond C. Rinaldi II, five twenty Spruce Street, Scranton, Pennsylvania. I'm here tonight regarding a use variance. Before we begin, I would like, just a matter of order, I would like to amend the application to reduce the uses, if I can, tonight. Instead of...the application that was made was for professional, medical, dental use, retail neighborhood shop stores, and residential high-end apartments. After discussing the same with my client, we would like to limit that use to professional, medical, dental, professional space. The second request that we're moving for here tonight is with regards to the parking. For those of you that are not familiar with the property, it's located at the intersection of Ray Street in the plot section of Scranton. It's an old industrial building that has now been sitting vacant for a period of time. My client, who I'll have testify here, is under agreement to purchase the building for further development, for use, for a psychologist who treats children and on the autism spectrum as well. And with that, once again, we're requesting a use variance. The property's located in an R one A zone. We're looking for use that would be consistent with the CN zone, which is located across the street and farther down Ray Street. So before I begin, I'll...if I can, I don't know, Mr. Penatar, if I need a motion with regards to amending the application, or if I can just move forward with my case.
You heard the proposed amendments. Do you have any objection?
No.
With that, I'll call the first witness. Chris, if you want to come up?
Will you raise your right hand, please? Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths that help you God?
I do.
Name and address.
Chris Colley, three oh two Thackeray Close in Music.
Are you the owner of Northeast Economic Advisors Inc., the advocate in this manner?
Yes.
What's your profession?
Consultant for developers.
If you could describe in general terms the property that is the subject of this variance application?
The property consists of three parcels. Parcel number one is the building itself. It's a twenty thousand square foot building, two-story building for the biggest part. It sits on a parcel of land of about a hundred thirty, a hundred thirty approximately. It borders Riverside Drive and Race. The backside of it coming down Riverside, it cuts into Canton Court there, and across Canton Court, there's two additional parcels that run the entire length of Canton Court, which is approximately a hundred and thirty feet. And the average depth goes anywhere from thirty feet on one parcel to about forty feet on another parcel.
Do you know what type of business was previously located at the property?
It was my knowledge that it was a commercial storage previous to that. I believe it was a manufacturer.
And for the board's pleasure, I did have distributed earlier a tax map and an aerial map of the property. I don't know if those were distributed to you. I'm going to rely on those and then submit them as evidence, if I may. Mr. Colley, are you familiar with the map? What I'm going to mark is exhibit one, and if you could describe or identify what this represents?
Yes. It's pretty much mimicking what I just described as the property itself. Once again, the building bordering Riverside and Race, and then on the backside on Canton Court right there, which is not identified, is the two additional parcels.
And just for the board's pleasure, this is the tax map that's been outlined in green. I'll have it marked as exhibit one later in the testimony. The next document is the aerial photograph I'm going to rely on and show to Mr. Colley. Mr. Colley, if you can identify what this represents or what this document shows?
Sure. Once again, it's demonstrating the building itself, sitting on about a one thirty by a one thirty lot. It's about a twenty thousand square foot building, two-story building, masonry constructed. Canton Court is shown right there with the additional lots on the backside of Canton Court.
Is this an accurate photograph of the appearance of your property?
Yes.
Are you familiar with the properties in the neighborhood where your property's located?
Yes.
Are there any other commercial buildings in the neighborhood?
Down on Ray Street, there's several commercial properties.
And if I can direct your attention to one of the other exhibits, which is a copy of the city of Scranton zoning map, if you could identify kind of like the colors that are identified, or maybe to help the board identify where exactly the property is located?
Sure. Once again, all the green is the residential section of it. What they deem as the pink, that is, that's all the...I believe that's a CN zone. And then the purple is an industrial zone.
What are the type of uses are in the vicinity of your lot?
On the backside of it, it's all residential. Down on Ray Street, there's commercial. And then, from a zoning perspective, on the opposite side of Riverside and Race, they're both CN zone.
You previously identified what's been marked as the zoning map. Your building is located in the R one A zone. Is that correct?
Yes.
How do you wish to use this property?
We're going to want to utilize it for office slash medical, professional.
Have you investigated developing the property without obtaining the requested variances?
Yes.
Would you be able to develop it without the requested variances?
It would be cost prohibitive, because it's in an R one A zone, you would have to basically demolish the entire property, and it just would not be cost-effective at all.
Would you say that your property is uniquely situated so that the zoning ordinance is more burdensome to your property than other nearby commercial property?
Oh, definitely.
Based on your experience, would you say that your property is uniquely burdened by the city of Scranton's zoning ordinance?
Yes.
Do you think a mix of medical, professional, office space would be a reasonable use for this property?
We believe it is. We believe that it would definitely serve the neighborhoods, and not only from the plot, but also from the green room section of the city itself.
In your opinion, if a variance were granted for your proposed use, would there be any harm to the community?
We don't believe that. It would be very negligible, if anything.
Would you put any strain on municipal services or increase any neighborhood traffic to any measurable degree?
Not to any great degree, in our opinion.
Would it have any impact on any neighboring uses?
Not in our opinion.
Do you see any benefit to the community in allowing the variances to develop the property?
Definitely. It's a building that sat vacant for an extended period of time right now. It's definitely starting to deteriorate on the Canton Court side. So just the mere fact of the purchase and the renovation, we intend on probably putting at least in this first section about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars into the property.
Do you think that the zoning plan for the city of Scranton would suffer any harm if the requested variances were granted?
No, not in our opinion.
In your opinion, should the variance stop by, you would be granted in this case?
Yes.
Would you say that your property is uniquely situated so that the zoning ordinance is more burdensome to your property than other ones nearby?
Oh, definitely. Certainly it is, yeah.
If the variances were granted, would you see any measurable adverse impact on municipal services? services?
We don't think so at all. There'd be obviously an increase of traffic being from obviously a vacant property right now, but very negligible.
That's all the questions I have for this witness. I do have other witnesses, but if the board wishes to take the questions.
Could you go a little bit further and explain to us exactly what's going on? You said the first phase is 750. Like how many phases are we talking? I mean, it looks like parking is going to be a huge issue there.
Correct. So from a parking issue, we're demonstrating that we're going, with the lots on the Canton Court side, that we're going to be able to put about 12 parking spots right there. So at least in phase number one that we're talking about right now, that we have a doctor, so that's going to be five spots right there. And then we have 20 employees, so obviously we have to demonstrate a 25 off-site. So obviously the difference being 13 off-site, that's what we're seeking the variance on. Going forward, we're obviously just being pragmatic about the whole thing. We understand that there's going to be a parking issue. We would not move forward on additional phases unless we solve that parking issue going forward.
Chris, one of the documents that we submitted to the board was the Google Earth image. And did you have your architect or engineer design spots located on Ray Street and the other cross street to demonstrate the off-street parking that would be available and the parking that would be available on the vacant lot that you own on the other side of the court?
Yes.
So if you have that Google Earth image, the images may be slight, but on that plan, does it indicate parking along Ray Street and, forgive me, once again, the cross street?
Riverside.
Riverside Drive.
Yes. So what we did was, we were cognizant of the truck traffic coming down on Ray Street, emergency vehicles potentially having to enter into the plot section, as well as school buses coming into the plot section as well, too. So we had our engineer look at the radius turn coming off Ray Street, I'm sorry, coming off the bridge onto Ray Street. So we did obviously push back parking on Ray Street on the far side of the building. And then we have parking on the, we'll call the dyke side of Riverside. And then probably very light, you can see on the Canton Court side where there's about 12 spots designated.
The parking that you identified on Riverside and on Ray Street, are there any homes located within those sections right now?
No, not where we have the designated parking.
So no parking within the neighborhood section of the plot section, is that correct?
That's correct.
I can interrupt you there. We can't consider street parking. You have to write off-street parking.
Correct.
We can't guarantee them spaces, maybe some of the neighbors will start parking there.
That's correct.
And you have no parking then.
That's correct.
So how many do you have on your property?
12.
And that's the most you can get out of that property?
Yeah, that's on that Canton Court side that we're squeezing in right there.
If you notice, Mr. Gattens, I mean, the building takes up the entire lot.
I know. It's not the first time this building's come before us. It was here before us before and the same problem happened with parking. For warehouses and stuff.
The only open space that we, the current owner has, is that vacant lot on the opposite alleyway.
See, my concern, the first phase, you probably squeeze in there. It's the two phases after it that I'm not, I'm not comfortable voting for a building piece, like we're giving you the whole pine, you only have one piece developed and we have no idea what's going on down the road then.
Well, I mean, if you want me to address the second phase, our thoughts on the second phase?
Not thoughts, I'd like to hear a definite for the second and third phase before I vote on a whole building.
The, if you look at the aerial, and you see Canton Court right there?
Yes.
And if your eyes follow the building on Canton Court right there?
Mm-hmm.
So there's like a little square on Canton and Riverside right there.
Right.
So just follow your eyes, parallel, right down. We intend on demolishing that whole backside.
That back corner.
That's correct. Not only that back corner, going from Riverside and I believe that back street is Shawnee?
Yeah.
All the way to that backside.
So just for Mr. Gattens, if he could approach, maybe he can show you specifically?
I got it. I know where it is.
Yeah, we understand.
We've seen this building.
Obviously, we understand that there's a problem going forward and we were, once again, I said it before, have to be very pragmatic about it and be very sensitive to the neighborhood itself. We don't want traffic going into the neighborhood and parking out there. And, you know, we, that part of the building is deteriorating right now, so we figured we'd put the money into the parking rather than into the building itself.
What do you think you'll pick up parking-wise there?
I'm sorry.
Like how many spots do you think you'd be able to pick up by doing the second phase, like you said?
I just had to refer back, about 15, about 14 or 15.
Also, to elaborate on what Mr. Gattens said about the no-street parking, you do have the little truck, the little visual of the truck. If people were to park there and those other spots, you know how people think, oh, they're parked there, so I can park there. And someone's going to park in front of those cars and then a truck is not going to be able to pass through there. So even if we were to approve it with this size, none of these spots would work because you know how the human mind works and someone parks right here and you're not getting a truck through. And there's industrial.
He said that already.
Yeah, I know. But he said side-street parking at all. I'm saying if we were to approve it with the parking, this parking is a problem.
We can't approve it with that.
We could do.
Is there any way that during Phase 1, you could take that building down?
The entire building?
Well, the section you said you were going to take down, not the entire building.
Well, I just wanted to be certain.
Yeah, no, no.
We could definitely.
I mean, the reason you say that is because you're opening up parking. That, I'll speak for myself, I'd be more comfortable with looking at 25 spots or, you know, give or take a few than 12.
I'm referring to my engineer over there. He gives the blessing all the time.
Give it the nod, you know?
Why don't we hear from him? You want to go up and be smarter?
Emmett, if I can bring up Mr. Mancinelli.
Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths that help you God?
I do.
Name and address, please?
My name is Emmett Mancinelli, last name is M-A-N-C-I-N-E-L-L-I, and my address is 625 East Drinker Street in Dunmore.
Thank you.
Mr. Mancinelli, were you retained by Mr. Colley in this process here?
Yes.
And were you the one who developed the parking plan, I'll say, along Ray Street and River Street?
Yes.
And if you could speak to the specific question with regards to the portion of the building along Canton Court?
As Mr. Colley said, the portion of the building along Canton Court is probably the most severely deteriorated at this point. And looking at it and what would, cost would be to renovate that, it would almost be practical to take that portion, that portion down. That is evidently an addition that was put on the building. I'm sure this building has undergone several additions over its lifetime. So you could see where there's that spot in the back that kind of runs along the court. So from a technical standpoint, it could be done. It was just a matter of breaking the project up into more manageable, you know, economic steps, you know, as far as going forward with the various phases.
With regards to Ms. Newcombe's question with regarding the parking along Ray Street and the turning radius, have you seen cases where a developer could pay for a sign, no parking from here to corner, that could help alleviate potentially the issue that you had addressed?
Yes.
We still can't, we can't entertain street parking. We can't control street parking. That's up to the city. So I mean, I understand what you're saying. I'm more comfortable if Phase 1 includes removal of that building and now you're going to have 25 spots instead of 12.
I think the idea of this was to show that if the initial phase needs the 25, we could get a variance, we could request a variance for the number required off-site by providing the 12 that we show on the plan.
Right.
That was the idea.
The 12 are the ones that are on your property already?
The 12 spots that enter, and it's a little bit hard to see because there are black lines on colored paper, but basically, the best way to look at it is the tax map that shows that little kind of hatchet-shaped piece in the back.
Right.
We would, you know, be able to park and fit 12 vehicles along that 130-foot piece of property that's parked.
On?
On our property. That's property that is controlled.
I don't want to consider the street parking at all. Let's just take that off the table, all right? Your property has 12 right now.
That's correct. And our very, my understanding is our request is to reduce the required off-street.
To what?
To the 12 and showing that, I talked to Mr. King, that on-street parking is allowed in this area, it's not prohibited.
Well, that's, I'd say it's prohibited, but...
No, no. And we're just letting you know that what 12 more spots would look like, you know, we're not in front of anyone's houses, we're not parking, driving, that kind of thing. That's all.
No, I agree. So...
Mr. Gattens, right to your question, I went right to my client with regards to demolition of the building and adding that additional parking. He's agreed to move forward on that.
I mean, it's a good project and I just get concerned if I have to vote on a whole building that's not developed and it's going to go piece at a time because if you put a school in there, I'll say, you know, the number of parks is about to shoot up.
So Mr. Mancinelli, if the demolition that was described previously and I'm indicating on the map, the area of the building that's the one-story portion from River Street to the cross street, if that portion of the demolition did occur, that would be an additional 12 or 13 spots, would that be?
Yeah, that's 130 feet that we would have, so we would be able to pick up about 14 spots or thereabouts.
So you're looking at, we'll say roughly 25 altogether.
So we'd have basically on one side of the court 14, one side 12, so we'd have 26 spots basically onsite.
Good, good.
Would you be paving all these spots, even the one across the court?
We would have to, yeah.
I have a question. I don't know, maybe you mentioned it and I didn't hear it, but did you happen to mention a timeframe that would take place between Phase 1 and Phase 2?
No, they got rid of the timeframe. It's all one timeframe. There's no...
No, he's talking about Phase 2, removing the demolition.
No, he withdrew Phase 2.
Huh?
There's no Phase 2.
He withdrew Phase 2. There's only Phase 1.
They withdrew it.
Well, you were talking about the removal of the parking lot. He was saying...
He just agreed to do it all at the same time.
Oh, okay.
Is there anybody else in the audience that wants to give test?
One more, I had, sorry, I had one more question. Did you happen to speak to any of the neighbors in the residential part, because it is quite large residential, about the plans? Because a demolition plan is a pretty big thing in a residential neighborhood. I was just curious.
We did try to. We looked up on the web for the Plot Association, but couldn't find, I don't think that we could find a point of contact information on there. I did reach out to somebody else in the plot section, not an immediate neighbor, but he was the one who made us aware of the potential turning radiuses on there. Coming off, I'm sorry, coming off the bridge onto Race.
I'm just concerned about the sound and all the noise that's going to be from demolition.
Oh, as far as the demolition aspect?
Yes, as far as the demolition, yes.
Anybody can knock that building down.
Oh, I know, I know. But it's a residential neighborhood right next to it. I just wanted to know if they're aware that they're going to be...
We would take full caution of that whole thing.
Thank you.
And that'd be standard construction practices.
Well, I would assume that. I'm just...
Mr. Ranaldi, you have another witness, you said?
Yes, I double-billed Mr. Barali. Did he give you a deal at least, or? I just wanted to let him know I called first, so.
You're already sworn, Mr. Barali.
I don't know if I have to go through...
No, he's, he's already sworn. He's already put his...
Don't beat that shit.
We know him.
Are you familiar with the property under contract for the applicant?
Yes, I am.
Have you visited the site?
Yes, I have.
Have you studied the lot and the surrounding properties?
I have.
I've been showing different maps here that are presented before the board. What's been marked is different exhibits here. Are you familiar with the property in question here?
Yes, I am.
The next map I'm going to show you is the one that's been marked as the zoning map for the city of Scranton.
Correct.
Can you tell me what the zoning classification for the property is?
The zoning classification for the property is R1A, and unfortunately, it's just right across the street from a CN zone. We were talking about distance from different zoning districts. This is one that's a classic one.
Are all the properties that front on Ray Street in the same zoning class?
No, there's some that are, when you take a look at the property, at one end you have the R1A zone, which this property's in, and you also have directly across the street from it, a CN, neighborhood commercial. When you go up further, there's about a dozen homes in the middle of the street. When you get up to Amelia Ave, you run into an industrial zone. So it's sort of like bookends. You have non-residential uses at both ends of the street and some residential in between.
So based on your experience and knowledge as an expert in municipal planning, would you say that the property in question is uniquely burdened by the city of Scranton zoning ordinance?
I would.
And why?
It's uniquely burdened due to the fact that it's in the R1A zone, that's a fact. But the other thing is it's an existing non-conforming structure and non-conforming use. So there's very little that you could do with the property based upon the zoning regulations that exist for the R1A district and the existing features on the property, which is primarily the building itself.
Based on your experience as a municipal planner, do you think a single-family residence would be a reasonable use for this property?
No, there's a definite hardship due to the fact that in order to build a single-family home on that property or even more than one, you would have to demolish it. So it would be an, really an undue physical expense. And I wanted to point out that when I was looking at the criteria for variance on that particular issue, your zoning ordinance does state a variance may be granted where the applicant proves that the property can only be used for a permitted use at a prohibited expense. We think that certainly applies to this particular property.
In your opinion, would a residential use be a reasonable use for the property?
It wouldn't be a reasonable use because the only way you could proceed with that is demolishing, demolishing the current property itself.
Would you say that without the variance permitting the business uses that the client is requesting, the property would be deprived of all reasonable uses?
It would.
Have you looked at the zoning ordinance with regards to the R1A residential district?
I have.
Did you review prior to this hearing?
Yes, I did.
Have you reviewed the permitted uses for the residential district listed in that part of the ordinance?
Yes, I have. And the only residential uses that are really permitted in there are the single-family detached dwellings.
The other uses are city-owned uses, emergency services?
I was looking at structural ones that would be of either of a non-public nature or that would have a physical presence on the property.
In your professional opinion, if a variance were granted to allow proposed use as an office, as a medical office space, would there be any harm to the community?
No, in fact, I think what it would be, it would be a very positive impact. Number one, you would be having an investment into a property that's currently deteriorating. You would be creating new jobs and it seems to be in line with the city's economic policy of trying to both create jobs and have more tax-producing property in the city itself.
Would the applicant's proposed use have a negative impact on the existing uses?
I think the only impact it'll have on the character of it is a positive influence in terms, if you have the property and an investment into it, improve it and bring activity to the site, it'll be, serve as almost like a stabilizing force in that neighborhood for that particular location. To leave it go otherwise, it would probably deteriorate and then become a blighting influence on the neighborhood.
Do you see any benefit to the community in allowing the variance to rehabilitate the professional office building on the applicant's property?
Yeah, I think the obvious benefits are very clear in terms of new jobs, improving a property that would otherwise deteriorate and providing a positive influence on the neighborhood.
Would you say that any possible harm to the public would be outweighed by the benefits you described?
I would agree with that because I don't think there's going to be any negative impact on the neighborhood. In fact, I think if you say it is going to change the character of the neighborhood, the answer would be yes, but in a positive sense, not in a negative sense.
Drawing on your experience as an extensive municipal planner, do you think that the comprehensive zoning plan for the city would suffer any harm if the request for variance were granted?
None whatsoever. I think probably in the long run, when the city's looking at rezoning properties, this will probably be one area where they look at and say, there's a, we have one property here that's not, is a non-residential use and right across the street is a CN district, probably in their comprehensive zoning scheme for the city, I would not be surprised if the city planner and the planning commission opted to rezone this property in the future.
Did I ask you to prepare a professional report?
Yes, you did.
With regards to this? And I don't recall if I submitted this to the board previously.
I don't think you did.
Mr. Barali, again, I'd like to... Mr. Barrell, again, did you prepare a report at my request?
Yes, I did.
In the synopsis of that report, basically, did it cover all the questions that I covered here tonight?
Yes, it did. The questions you covered is provided in more detail in that report, but they are included.
Based on your report, would you recommend change in the use as so requested?
I believe that they met the criteria for the hardship for the variances that are being requested. All five of the criteria.
I'd ask that this last exhibit be submitted as evidence. I don't know what number I'm up to, but I'd ask.
I think it's number four, but we'll accept it.
Thank you. If you have any questions, Mr. Barrell, please.
Is there anybody else in the audience that wants to give testimony on the case? You raise your right hand, please. Do you sound me swear to testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths that help you, God?
Yes.
Name and address, please.
Pardon me?
Name and address.
Jerome Scott, 2122 Shawnee Avenue, Scranton, PA. Maybe your neighbor. I was just, wanted to ask you about what you were planning on doing. I was a little bit confused. You said some kind of adolescent thing?
Autism.
Pardon?
Autism.
Autism? As an inpatient treatment, or?
Yes.
Yeah?
Counseling. It's a counseling service.
Counseling? So, and also, in the short thing that I read, is apartments also?
No, we took that off the table.
Oh, you took that off the tables? Yeah. That's, so, it's just going to be autistic children?
A counseling practice. Primarily, it serves as autistic children.
Oh, yeah. So, would we, would it be, if somebody puts an ordinance in like this, would it be limited to that in the future? Would an ordinance have to be expanded on to be?
If they were to change the use?
I believe anything that would qualify as a medical, professional use, it doesn't have to be specifically autism. It could be any, yeah, any professional medical use.
I would think as, you know, I've been reading a lot in the news about these methadone clinics and things like this.
You're going to need to speak closer to that microphone. We can't really...
I'm sorry. I've been, I've been reading a lot about things lately, about the methadone clinics and treatments for drug addiction, things like that. And it came to my mind that this could possibly be like a Trojan horse if with such a broad description that you guys are putting out there. Could you talk about that a little bit?
That's not on the table at all.
That's not on the table at all?
We have no vision of that at all.
Right. Just to ease your worries. What's that?
Just to ease your worries a little bit, a medical office is defined as treatment and examination of patients by state-licensed physicians, chiropractors, or dentists, and provides that no patients shall be kept overnight, or may, and it may involve use of testing for tissue, blood, medical or dental purposes. It's not a treatment center. It's not a drug dispensary or anything like that. They would have to come back for permission to change that use.
Right.
Back here.
We saw complimentary services, such as a dentist or something like that.
Right. Have you ever done this before? Do you do this for a living?
Yes, I've worked with, myself, and I also work with area developers and projects.
Cool. Awesome. The, I would think that, did you guys drive by the place?
Absolutely. Many times. It's been in front of us a few times for other...
Oh, okay. All right. It's a dump. So, if you, if you guys could come in there and make it nice, that'd be awesome. There's tons of parking. Don't worry about the cars.
Can we mark that, please?
Seriously, right? Our neighborhood is...
Strike that remark.
And the, and the trees are nice. Like, you know, I'm thinking you're going to have to cut that one tree down there, because that's probably a whole parking spot in itself, right? Who's the parking guy? You down there, right? Did you look at the tree?
I tried to save the tree.
What?
Tried to save the tree.
I don't care about the tree. Those leaves are going in the gutters. Helicopters are in the gutters. So, but either way, like, the park in there, that one lot that these guys are talking about, I don't know about 12, but like, there's like that house there with the fence, right? You saw it? They'd kind of be blocking that in. But on Riverside Drive, there's quite a bit of park in there, you know? I don't see, what do you think? Pardon me?
This is testimony, yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks a lot.
But hey, nice to meet you. It's a dump, please.
Can we get more witnesses like that, please?
Yeah.
You raise your hand. Do you sound me swear to testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths that help you, God?
I do.
Name and address, please.
Tom Cipriano, 2235 Comages Avenue in the plot.
Cipriano.
C-I-P-R-I-A-N-O. I just wanted to ask a couple of clarifying questions. There are 20 employees coming to the building each day, so they're going to try to cut back on how much on-street parking there will be. But if it's a medical office, I hope, patient-driven, if it's going to be a successful medical office, there will be people coming and going throughout the course of the day, how do we, you know, arrange for all of the visitors to the building during the course of the day to park and not clog up the streets involved? Race Street is very tight. If there are cars parked on both sides, two cars cannot pass in the middle. The main entrance of the building, as it sits right now, I don't know if that's going to be redeveloped, is right at the intersection of Race and Riverside. If patients want to get close to that entrance, there's the potential for them to be parking on both sides of Race Street. And if a bus, if a fire truck tries to get through, even if, you know, people are down far enough on one side, if there's parking on both sides, it's going to be a real challenge.
Hey, Tom, I think that's something that you could petition the city for, to put parking on one side only.
Okay.
You'd have to go before council and stuff like that.
All right, because there are no signs. I wasn't sure.
But if you went before council with that concern, once this project starts, I mean, that can be done.
Okay, great. The commercial designation on the other side of the street is kind of invalid. That might be dating back to when the neighborhood had no levees, and there were other businesses in that area. The properties across the street, on Riverside Drive and Race Street, are levees, which cannot be developed right now. So, it's kind of a, that's part of the outdated nature of the maps. But that's kind of a weak, you know, justification for the commercial. I don't know. Those are our main concerns, were the parking issues and the fact that that's a main thoroughfare into the neighborhood. And if there's a kind of a bottleneck there with vehicles, it could just be problematic. We all agree, I think, that development of the property would be a huge boon to the neighborhood. No one wants to see it in its current state. But just as long as the parking doesn't become some sort of, you know, chronic problem at that location.
Did you hear him agree to knocking down a good portion of that?
Yeah.
Okay.
But again, if there's patients coming and going, we don't have any idea of the volume, you know, the frequency of the visits. But, you know, with the 20 employees...
No, absolutely, absolutely.
All of the spaces on Canton will be dedicated to the employees, plus however many will still have to be on the street, plus the patients. So, if we're talking about several medical offices, it all depends on unknown volume of patients coming and going each day. That's our concern. That's all.
Well, I could tell you from my experience being here, the developer seems like a gentleman that actually owns the building. And I think he'd be more willing to sit down and work with the neighbors if there's concern that this goes out.
Yes. And with this type of business itself, this medical, it's not, you know, a lot of medical practices overbook. With this type of business, they do not overbook, and they give space in between it, primarily from a privacy issue itself. And we have, or she, this, the eventual person who has business there, we're saying that there is, you know, the 20, 20 employees, but they're not a full-time, they're not there all the time.
Okay.
They have some administrative staff there full-time, but not all the counselors.
I just know the original ask was 25 spaces. I guess it's less because the apartments won't be a factor, but...
Correct. And the original ask was because we had, it's based on doctor requiring five, and then, we had the 20 employees, whether they're part-time or full-time, they're still an employee that we have to provide, you know, under the code. But, once again, we understand, we want to work with the neighborhood in every manner. We don't want to overcrowd you guys.
Okay.
All right?
Much appreciated.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else want to give testimony? Okay, there's none.
I'll make a motion then.
I'll second.
It's going to be, obviously, we're going to vote, because he's, we're going to vote in this as one with the knockdown for the additional parking, correct? Do you have to put that in there, Dan?
I could put it in.
So, the stipulation would be that the one section of building will be removed as the project initially proceeds.
That's along Canton Street, right?
Right.
Yes.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Gaddens?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Vote of four to zero. You've been approved. Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you.
I don't think they're working very well.
Good luck, guys.
Yeah. It doesn't feel like it's working.